Hello everyone, welcome back to the I S E Target S S C English session. We are going to discuss Paper Six. This session we will discuss very, very, very important questions. Let's try to add as much information as possible. Target S S C and target, you know, target S S C, C H S L and C G L program is very important. In this program, we will discuss every question, every model. Focus on it clearly explain it. At the same time, whenever you come across any new point, please make a running notes. Without further delay, we will start the session. So, the first question is, the first question is a vocabulary based question, my dear friends. So, first question, I have a vocabulary based question. This is a sentence with a direct, I have an independent, individual word. See, Antonimo freeable. So, whenever I have a word, I have to tell it. Whenever I have a word, I have to tell it. I have to tell it synonymically. If it is synonym, Antonimo tells it. So, freeable is a word, synonym tells it. If it is synonym, Antonimo tells it. Freeable is a word, we have to lose it, my dear friends. Freeable is a word, we have to lose it. Like, which can be easily broken into pieces. This is what I have to say. Even more, freeable and crumbly are very, very close. Freeable and crumbly are very close. But, loose is opposite, tight. Tight is elastic. Tight is elastic. So, freeable is a word, Antonimo tells it. Is it a problem? No. Anyway, there are options. Transient is an option. This means also I have to tell it, my dear friends. Transient is temporary. Transient is something which is temporary, not permanent. For example, my friend is very upset for some reason. I will tell you that is okay, cheer up. Do not be upset too long. This problem is not permanent. This problem is transient. Okay? Next. Erroneous is a word. Erroneous is error. Mistakes are made. Erroneous is mistakes. So, freeable is meaning loose opposite is tight. Tight means elastic, my dear friends. Okay. Let's have a look at the next question. Here we have an idiom. See, idioms are necessary in S S C exam. You cannot have Staff Selection Commission exam without idioms. See? See. Clean the air is an idiom. What is it? Clean the air is an idiom. I will explain it after I have answered. Try it. Fourth option. Diffuse an angry or tense situation by frank discussion. Is it? If it is not possible, talk to yourself. Solve the problem. Fight with anger. Clean the air. I will give you one example. Now, there are friends, Ramesh and Suresh. Very close friends. I am a friend. But, Ramesh and Suresh have a difference of opinion. They both are not talking to each other. Instead, they are also fighting with each other. But, for four days, we talked. Two, three months, we did not talk. Now, I will tell you. If we do not talk, it is not possible. Let's have a meeting together. Let's sit together and let's talk very openly. Open the conversation gap. Frank discussion. Let's sort out the problem. And what is it? Clean the air. What is the message? I request you to sit together and clean the air. Okay? Next. My dear friends, indirect, indirect speech is not possible. S S C exam is expected. But, I have said before, indirect, indirect speech is quite easy concept. It is important in every time. But, in every time, whether you are able to do it in a very less time or not, that is something matters. So, see, question is asked, options asked. However, if question, options asked, the answer is like this. Just go by the helping verbs. What is helping verb? Try it. He proposed that they should wait. And this question is already in indirect speech. The given question is already in indirect speech. So, he proposed that they should wait. What is it? He proposed that they should wait. Already, this indirect speech question should is not present. We all know. In indirect should, in direct shall is present. Should is also present. Double case, we have two cases. If it is not possible, it is not possible. Should, can, can, can is not related. My dear friends, should, can, can is not related. Should, must, can, can is not related. But, definitely, the answer is the third option. Actually, I did not read the question. I did not study the options. But, I got the answer. Because I know the simple rule that should, should, should is present. Should, shall is present. Some cases, shall, should. Some cases, shall, would. But, generally, should. But, in any case, should, would is not related. In any case, should, must, can is not related. In any case, should, can is not related. So, I have taken that as an advantage and got the answer rather than thinking too much about the answer. What we have studied, because in S S C exams, time is very crucial. Okay? Next. Let's have a look at the next question. Next question. Again, we have an idiom. It is said, how many times we have repeated idioms? We all know. Idioms are not possible in S S C exam. But, you have to study idioms as much as possible. What is an idiom? See. Plain sailing is an idiom. What is it? Plain sailing is an idiom. What is meant by plain sailing? Before I have answered, you can guess it. Plain sailing is a calm, happy journey. A calm, a prayer. But, in relation to it, first option. What is it? Smooth and easy progress. Yes. Second option, to lose valuable ideas. No, it is not related. To appear in a way or make an impression that causes unfavorable. Not possible. To experience a deep restful sleep. Not possible. Plain sailing is a calm, a progress. Journey is a physical journey. No. How is your business going, friend? How is your business going? I will tell you. Yeah, it is beautiful. Plain sailing. Plain sailing is a calm, a. All is well. We all know. All is well is an expression. Plain sailing. Smooth and progress in a process or activity. Okay? Next question. Again, vocabulary is here. I always say this when we talk about vocabulary. You need to be very careful. M P S is an idiom. I have Antonimo, my dear friends. First of all, M P S is a word. So, I have said before, M P S is a religion. No belief in God, no belief in religion. M P S is not having any belief in religious activities, devotional activities. You know, God, what is it? Not possible. But, these options. Irrelevant. Irrelevant is the same. No belief in, no belief in God or religion or any other devotional activities. Sagacious is a word, wise. Sagacious is a word, wise. Devout. Devout is a devotion. Devout is a devotion. Devotional. Underscore is also, you know, it is a kind of underscoring. Very, 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 very prominent. But, if we choose it, M P S Antonimo tells us. Devout, devotion. Devout is not devotion. Next. Now, here we have a beautiful close test. I have said before, close test is always. My dear friends, close test is done. We have to check the paragraph. Options just. Our sentence but we have to find the answer. So, sorry, what is it? Closest question. Right. Let's see the first question from here. See? The missionary, the missionary ladies had put together, the missionary ladies had put together a Santa bag of gifts dashed by members of another church. I am repeating the sentence once again. The missionary ladies, the missionary ladies had put together a Santa bag of gifts dashed by members of another church. The church members dashed their bags. By is present. By is present, passive voice. Passive voice is present. Passive voice is a verb. Third form only present. Passive voice is always in the third form. We choose it, collect is not possible. Accumulate is not possible. Donate, connect. Gifts are discussed. Connect is not possible. Gifts are connected. But, the answer is donated. What did I say? By is a simple indication. By is a passive voice. Now, passive voice is present. Verb is in the third form. But, third forms are selected. First option, fourth option, spot eliminated because they are not the third forms. Second and third option, connect is not related to gifts. That is how the answer is. So, I have thought. Even when we do close tests, even when we do close tests, the importance of grammar rules is pivotal. Okay? Importance is quite present. Now, next question. If you have a look at the next question, my dear friends. So, gifts are present. None of the gifts had names on them. Any gift has not appeared. There were separate sacks for boys and girls of different ages. Different, different ages are related. Different, different categories are divided. One of the Chinese, one of the Chinese parishers had Santa Claus costume. Costume was present. Santa Claus costume is present. Santa Claus costume was present. Costume is not present. But, options are not present. So, costume is present. Is it related to double? Costume is present. But, the answer is don't. Don't is present. Put on, put on something. I want to donate myself with a beautiful blazer. Don't is present. Easy. Let's have a look at the next question, my dear friends. Next question. What is it? Santa Claus dress was present. From here, this sentence is completed. Normally, in exam, seven, eight. We have three to four sentences. Maximum, we do not have to read it. But, here I have to understand. I think the only children who thought he was the real thing were too young to know that Santa Claus was not Chinese. When my turn came up, the Santa man asked me how old I was. I thought it was a dash question. I have asked you. It was a dash question. It was a dash question. First of all, I have a technique. It was a dash question. What is it? My dear friends, it was a dash question. A. Article A is present. If it is not possible, consonant is present. V, V is not present. See? It is present. Dash question is not present. Deservedly is not present. Happiness is not present. Trick question is present. Trick question is, I have tried to do it. Riddle is present. It was a kind of trick question. I was seven according to the American formula and eight by Chinese calendar. I have told you. I said I was born on March seventeen nineteen fifty one. I have told you. That seemed to dash him. First of all, you see. That seemed to. Two is present. Verb is in the first form. Whenever two comes in a sentence, the verb is in the first form. Two plus V one is present, my dear friends. Two plus V one is present. But, two plus V one is not present. V one is not present. Disturbed is not present. Now, I have asked you. He asked me my age. I told him my age. Is it related to punishment? Age is present. I have satisfied it. But, if I have to say, rather than finding the right option, it is easier to find the wrong options. And it is present. Elimination process also sometimes helps you so much. Okay? So, I have satisfied it. Now, see what is it? He then solemnly asked if I had been a very, very good girl this year and did I believe in Jesus Christ and obey my parents? I have asked you. Do you pray to Jesus Christ? Do you pray? I have told you. I knew the only answer to that. I have told you. I dash back with equal solemnity. I dash back. So, it is present. I have told you. I have told you. See. I nodded back. Do you have a question? Do you believe in God? Yes, I believe. Yes, I have told you. I nodded back. It is not possible to clap. Not possible to cheer. I have told you, my dear friends. Nod is saying yes. I have nodded my head. Is it? Nodding the head. But, anyway, this closest comparative is bigger in size. But, good part is, I have not learned vocabulary. Because all the four options are quite easy words, commonly spoken words. See? Let's have a look at the next question, my dear friends. Jumble. I have said before, jumbled is done. Actually, we follow techniques. I have explained it clearly. Actually, jumbled is done. We follow several techniques. So, try it. How to do it, I have explained it clearly. Jumbled is start by the options. Options. What is it? B, B, D, C. Is it? First statement is A. Do you? Because B is present. D is present. Generally, B has two options. D is present. One option is present. Choose it. Eliminate it. If it is right answer, time saves. See? For example, C is present. Is it? We have to choose it. It is present. Or, eliminate it. See? What is it? See. See option. Study it. Two trickster poets, young indigenous men approached me and looked me straight in the eye. Who were the poets? Or, who were they? I have seen them. Is it first statement? Is there a reason? Or, is it wrong? There is no reason. It may be the first statement, may not be the first statement. But, D is present. D option is present. Hold it. Sorry, now, see it. Sorry. D statement. What is it? The intimacy of day. Day. Day is a word. Day is a word. My dear friends, day is a word. Day is a word. But, the answer is D cannot be the first statement, my dear friends. And what is it? D option eliminated. Now, try it. B is not present. Already, C is not present. B is not present. I sat on my couch, a virtual reality headset strapped to my face. My feet hovering over a campfire. I have been to a camp. Enjoyed it. This is the first sentence. But, if we compare it. If we compare it. Is it? Who is it? I have seen it. This is the first statement. The answer is B A first statement. Because. What is it? I was happily listening to music, sitting at the campfire. But, the answer is B A first statement. Point number one. Now, B is present. B is present. C is present. Only you choose it. B A and B C. B is present. What is it? I have been to a camp. B is present. Who is it? But, what is it? If I craned my neck up, I could see the stars. If I craned my neck up, I could see the stars. This is not present. Strong reason is not present. B is present. Strong reason is not present. B is present. B is present. But, what? I have said shortcut. This is not possible. What is it? C statement is present. Who is it? Two men is a noun. Noun. Day is a pronoun. Always remember, my dear friends. Noun is present. But, the answer is C. And options, C is present. This is C. So, if you are able to read the sentences and connect them properly, that is one way. Or, if you feel you are taking a lot of time. Find the pairs. Pairs is present. The answer is pairs. Okay? Noun is present. Pairs is present. My dear friends. See. Now, jumbled is completed. Let's move ahead to the next beautiful question. Sentence replacement is present. Brackets are present. If it is present, sentence is replaced. See? We have dash is that. Very easy question. Because question is already have. There is not brackets. See? Have is not present. It is present. Have is present. We all know. Have is present. Third form is present. New is not present. But, third form is known. See? But, the answer is in the third option, my dear friends. That's all. The answer is in the third option, my dear friends. Even more, if I have to say, no is present. No is past tense. New is past participle. Known is my dear friends. Known. So, have is present. But, I have selected B three. Okay? We all have a simple question. Has, have, had. Whenever it is present, the verb is in the third form. It is present. It is perfect tense. Okay. Let's have a look at the next question. Next question. What is it? Try it. Offers like these do not come every day and you should not pass it. It is present. It is present. Do not. Do not. See? We all have a question. If it is present, pass it up. If it is present, the answer is. Second option is the right answer. Okay? Pass it up is leave something. What is it? Pass it up is leave something. Pass it up is leave something. I hope the point is clear. See. So, error is present. Find the sentence which part has the error. See? Being busy is not the same as being productivity. My dear friends, whenever you have the expression being in a sentence, then it comes adjective. Of course, V three is present. Adjective is present. But, if we see here, being busy is a noun. See? Busy is an adjective. But, it is present. But, if you see here, being productivity is a noun. See? Productive is present. Productive is an adjective. Productive is an adjective. Being poor is present. Being happy is important in our life. Being knowledgeable is a secret to success. Being energetic is the right quality, is a good quality of any teacher. You understand? Being patient in our life is very important in difficult situations. Being calm is very important at times. Calm, patient, knowledgeable, energetic. What is it? Adjectives. See? But, whenever being is present, adjective is present. Productivity is an adjective. Productive is an adjective. I hope the point is clear. But, the answer is in the second option. Error is in the second option. Being productivity is not, being productive. See. Let's have a look at the next question, my dear friends. What is it? So, question is. Both Anand and Mithe likes to buy. See? I have understood. Both are. Both Anand and Mithe are. Both are plural. But, if the subject is plural, grammar is plural. If the subject is plural, verb also should be plural. But, it is. Likes is a singular verb. But, it is wrong. Subject plural, verb plural. Like is a plural verb. Like is a plural verb. That's all. That is the right answer. But, if we choose it. Yes is the answer. It is present. I always say this, when the subject is singular, verb should be singular. When the subject is plural, verb should be plural. I hope the point is clear. See. Next. Let's have a look at the next question. See? See what is it? Fill in the blank. The new year is always looked dash to with hope. New year is present. We all know. And it is present. My dear friends, when it is present, wait. When it is present, what is it? How do you say that? Look forward. My dear friends, look forward to. Do you? See? I have to wait. I have to wait. What is it? I am looking forward to promotion. See? I am looking forward to visa. I am looking forward to a new business plan. I am looking forward to. What is it? When it is present, wait. The answer is looking forward to. See? My dear friends. But, the new year is always looked forward to. Looking is not present. It is passive voice. Okay? I have given examples. It is passive voice. The answer is V three. i the passive voice lo undi kabati manaki V three ochinadi problem kadu look forward to is the right answer the new year is always looked forward to with hope aasa to manam innokorikala to manam new year ni welcome chappali prati year kada next question we shall dash from doing evil entamma we shall dash from doing evil it's a very 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 important model ama miro asal first of all meaning avenches call refine refrain restrain reserve we shall dash from doing evil doing evil ante bad ponnamma bad activities antangada doing evil ante entante bad activities antamo doing evil ante bad activities antam so bad activities chaykonda manani manam control cheskoli ani annam you know what preposition epraite mekku from ochindo mek telsipoli the right answer is refrain because manam neechkuntam prepositions class lo kuda refrain from so refrain from me kadu even prevent from manevaka expression koda manam discuss cheskuntam refrain from prevent from alage prohibit from ivani koda very important expressions in our English language prepositionsli ivani koda chala important kabati we shall refrain from doing evil is a right answer we shall refrain from is a right answer okay na right chalo next one so kriemadigare ante actu passive adigero my dear friends I keep saying this again and again actu passive lakonda a staff selection commission exam expect chaykudu kani actu passive andru chegalru takku time lo chegalava leda that's more important everybody can do actu passive but can you do in less than three to five seconds that is important anta takku time leyala chayalene mikku chesi chubistanu mundre nee mek shortcut lo answer chesesano tarvata explain yesanu carefulga vinandi this is a question do the answer is the answer is second option that's all sir inta fasti gala cheppe sir do ane chusar ventane second option ani ela cheppe sir my dear friends okusari mir chustae do you need motivation to work out is motivation needed by you to work out yala inta fasti ga cheppe ante actu voice passive voice change of voice ane concept lo manakone rules neechkuntam my dear friends ala neechkuriya rules lock important rule entante actu voice lo actu voice lo do kani does kani unto actu voice lo do kani does kani unto passive voice lo ease kani am kani ar kani use chestam entamma actu voice lo do or does unto passive voice lo ease kani am kani ar kani manam use chestam ventane nee answer lo ease kani am kani ar kani chusano ikkara does kani pinchindi ikkada ease undi ikkada ar undi kani motivation singular kabati ar avadu ease there a need ani chappalsna osam ledu kabati ease motivation yunduksari lage second optioni yundu kaindi ante ikkada you anedi subject ama motivation edi object kabadi reverse aina pudu motivation tothe startavalkani nenu need to ease there ani start chaykudu so I am repeating the rule for your kind sake actu voice do or does passive voice is amar okay remember this rule active is passive is less than five seconds lo chedan kavalsina okay okay ability you have to learn the rules like this chalo let's have a look at the next question idiyaam adigero yes idiyaams are very important for S S C exams so darken someone's door very 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 important i the chala salu chala salu previous exams lo ochina question ama darken someone's door annaru emannaru darken someone's door annaru mari dini answer emavutundo telsa okusari meru first option chustae to be an unwelcome visitor for someone ante ento chaptano nannu yavru pelavledu for example nobody invited me to the party aina koda pelavu poyenani ncheserante ma friend uh party ki velipoyano actually he doesn't like me for example imagine my friend doesn't like me but still I went to attend this party without any invitation apudu atanala feel outadante if he likes me that's a surprise to him he doesn't like me but still I went to the party that's a kind of disturbance for him apudu welcome chappukonna undagala raavadu neyamagala andu welcome chesaru kani it's a kind of unhappy welcome danne emantam ante darken someone's door antamama ante to be an unwelcome visitor nannu welcome chayleedatano kani nenu velipoyano ante I I am I am his unwelcoming visitor antam darken somebody's door okay na idea ochindi kada idiyaams anedi compulsariga manam study cheskoli S S C exams kosam let's have a look at the last question emannaro chodandi question emannarante valo choose the antoni manaru antoni madigaran ante epudu synonym telliali mekku felicitate ante ento telsa my dear friends felicitate ante respect chedam you know felicitate ante respect chedam lakapote you know sanmaaninchadam honor chedamani kodanu felicitate chedamante respect chedam honor chedamani koda antam respect chedam honor chedamani kodanamamo orakna chappalante felicitate na congratulate chedamana okay la untundi kani valu antoni madigero ante danke opposite ente avadu valanam respectfulga matlada konda avudamante disrespect chedamante insult chedam insulti bad mouth ane meaning undi bad mouth ante insulting criticize you know bad mouth means insult criticize laanti meaning undi sari sari runda ma karadmae sir what about the other two options congratulate chepmak telusu bad mouth ante chepparu bad mouth ante insult laanti meaning osunnan chepparu but what about the third option sir lull ante enti lull ante actually chappalante soft antamama softly the smooth antamo softly the smooth lady pacify ani koda antam ante chala prasantanga para matlati you know chala softga matlati lulling antam lull antam lullaby anta kada la iki emancipate emancipate ante entamma deni chaina manam free ipodam deni chaina koda free ipodam for example ok problem lo nu idukunavu you are entrenched in a problem you are entrenched in a problem and now for some good reasons you are out of problem but emantam thank god I got myself emancipated from this problem baita padanra babu nanukuntam danne chappadaniki manam I got myself emancipated antamante I got free antam okay na so emancipate ante got free antam free from antamo so felicitate ante gavraminchadam opposite ochaga gavra parichadam agora parichadane manam insult antam my dear friends mir chustae paper lo we have active is passive voice and we have direct indirect we have vocabulary and we have idiyaams we also have jumble statements and filling the blanks beautiful paper very important questions are covered here keep practicing as much as possible remember S S C exam you have to be more responsible for this you know uh idiyaams and vocabulary so fix a target if you have thirty days for the exam fix a target per day at least thirty words you will be able to study around thousand words you may not remember all but definitely you will remember some please do that I am sure success is going to be yours i session andar ki ardhameen nanukunano I believe everybody followed the points in this session that I have explained I hope the session is interesting and useful keep working hard to crack this S S C exam in the year two thousand twenty two good luck and all the best